Please, pledge the flag with us. Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Under God, indivisible, in which they run and do this for all. One of the silence, please. Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Griffith?
Present.
Mr. Haas? Mr. Haas? Ms. Howe?
Here.
Ms. Dermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Radel?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vog?
Here.
Mr. Haas? Mr. McInley?
Present. Thank you. Recognition ceremony proclamations. We have several retirements this month. Derry from the equipment operator for Road and Bridge, Ms. Long, who was a member of the area agency on aging. This, Mr. Palmetiere, who is budget and analyst for the mental health developmental services. And Ms. Restagio, who was the part-time senior citizen manager for the area agency on aging. So we will send them a letter congratulating on their retirement and wishing good health going forward. Everyone has received the proclamation in regards to the FEDALAL spectrum disorders awareness month. As indicated in the proclamation, next month, September, is the month that is designated for that particular disorder. We will be signing the proclamation in the Senate floor, then they will be having it at their meeting whenever they convene in the month of September.
Mr. McInley, point of order, please.
Go ahead.
On the proclamations, is it possible, is it possible, and I know we received the proclamation, but is it possible that they could be put on the agenda, the entire proclamation? So folks who get the agenda can read the proclamation?
This one is a little bit lengthy, but we can certainly look at that.
And where do we save those proclamations somewhere where if anybody wants to go back and reference a proclamation that maybe been made in the past?
Part of our minutes. They're part of our minutes.
But they're not, the proclamations are not in the minutes. The actual proclamation is not in the minutes.
Oh, I thought there were. Let me check on that, and I'll have a better answer for you.
All right, yeah, if you'd send me an email on that, I just, I just think that we get those proclamations online so that people can read them. That'd be wonderful.
Agreed. Just a note here, a text message from Mr. Austin. He's trying to join the meeting. I don't know if he's having technical difficulties or what the case may be. Jared, could you check with him to see if there's anything we can help him with, please? Okay. Additions or deletions from the voting session agenda? Hearing none, do we have a motion to adopt the voting session agenda?
So moved, Kendra.
Ms. Radel, do we have a second? Miss Segman. All favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions unheard? Motion carries? We need a motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the requirement, majority of those participating in the meeting must be physically present at the meeting. Do we have a motion, Ms. Howe?
So moved.
Do we have a second for Ms. Howe?
Second, Walter.
Mr. Griffith? All favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions unheard? Motion carries? Motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the conduct of public meetings. Somebody has background, please. Excuse me. Motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the conduct of public meetings. Since the current format is inconsistent with the terms of the state's emergency declaration, do we have a motion?
So moved, Sheila.
Ms. Saban, do we have a second for Ms. Saban?
Second, Chris.
Ms. Radel? All favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any in opposition?
No, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, any abstentions? Unheard? Motion carries? We're now down to the public comment regarding agenda items, please. Anyone from the public? Jared, is everyone from the lobby allowed, you have them in at this point?
Yes.
Okay. Any member of the public who would like to comment about agenda items?
Okay. Richard Manta?
Go ahead, Mr. Manta.
All right. So I see some agenda items in Luzern County. Is going to hire an attorney.
That's in the work session. That's in the work session, Mr. Manta. This is the voting session. Any agenda item in the voting session, please?
All right. But anyway, what comment I have, it's not on the agenda items, but I noticed the light.
Excuse me. I hope the comment is on agenda items only at this point. You'll have a chance to comment on anything else a little bit later.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, how is the president here?
Who's that?
Thanks to Jared for leaving. I just joined on here. I couldn't join in, so thanks, Jared.
I asked Jared to check, okay, Ms. Austin, thank you. We just are getting to the public comment on agenda items, Ms. Austin.
Mr. McInley, this is-
The county correctional facility, that's what it says right here. It's an agenda item. It says-
It's in the work session. It's not in the voting session. I'm sorry, somebody else tried to get on there. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Who's that, please, who would like to comment?
McInley, this is Mark Raybo speaking.
Go ahead, Mr. Raybo.
Yes, with regards to the motion to remove the table, from the table ordinance adopting the 2021 long-range operational fiscal and capital plan. I would like to know as far as the funding for the capital plan, you know, the funding that's remaining. Is there anything left over from, anything that was, you know, gotten from funding or any payments during the year from budget and finance with regards to any means of replenishment of the cap, for the capital budget? For the capital account, for the capital plan? I remember that the TIF from Highland Park was supposed to be, when I was commenting on the capital plan two years ago, supposed to be used for that purpose. So I think that I was wondering, you know, if there was any monies that was to be collected by budget and finance that could be utilized for replenishment of the capital, for the capital plan. That's my question. Thank you.
Very good. We'll get an answer for you when we get to that item, which is our first real voting item. Anyone else from the public like to speak regarding agenda items? Okay, hearing none, then we move on to the first item, which is a motion to approve the minutes from the August 11th meeting. We have a motion.
Motion, Sheila.
Saban, do we have a second for Ms. Saban?
Second, Linda.
Ms. Howe? On the question?
Mr. McInley, on the question?
Go ahead.
The items that were read into the record need to be in the physical minutes, not posted on the website. They are part of the actual transactions of the council, and therefore they should be in the physical minutes.
If you can do that.
So I'll make a motion that we amend the minutes to include those items, please.
We have a motion from Mr. Griffith to include the items, as he mentioned, from the emails and other contacts that were made to be included in the minutes. We have a second to Mr. Griffith's amendment.
Second, Chris.
Second, Mr. Perry. All favor of the amendment indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any in opposition? Any abstentions? Unheard? Motion carries? So the amendment will be added.
A clarification on that? We're printing the verbatim emails then into the minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
It'll be added to the minutes in the format that were presented.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Saban, do you want to add that to your motion?
Yes.
Ms. Howe, do you want to second that motion with the amendment?
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else? All favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any in opposition?
No. Urban?
Mr. Urban, any abstentions? Unheard? Motion carries? Moving down to number one. Motion to remove the, from the table, the ordinance adopted in 2021 long-range operational fiscal and capital plan for Luzern County. Do we have a motion to remove it from the table?
So moved, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second for Mr. Griffith? Mr. Schnee? On the question? All favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any in opposition? Any abstentions unheard? Motion carries? We're down to number two. Now that we removed the ordinance from the table, motion to adopt the ordinance adopted in 2021 long-range operational fiscal and capital plan for Luzern County. Do we have a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved, Linda.
Ms. Howe, do we have a second?
Second, McDermott.
McDermott. On the question? Mr. Pedry?
Mr. McInley? Thank you, Mr. McInley.
Mr. McInley, before Dave jumps in there, the manager, point of order.
There was somebody who tried to get on here. Who was speaking? I don't know who it was.
I was speaking, Mr. McInley. It's Walter.
No, but I thought there was somebody right before you, Walter.
Okay.
Did someone try to?
Is it me, Mr. McInley? I tried to say something.
Who's that? Who tried to say something?
Mr. McInley, it's Dave Pedry, but I'll give the floor to Walter.
Okay, all right. Go ahead, Walter.
Thank you, Mr. Pedry. Point of order on the motion to take it off the table? Should that have been a roll call vote? Was a roll call vote to table it?
I don't believe so. It was just a motion. It's not an ordinance or a resolution. It was just a motion to take it off the table. I don't believe we need to do that. But Mr. DeLuca?
But was there a roll call vote to table it? There was, correct?
I have to look at the minutes of the meeting from two weeks ago to tell you, yes or no.
Is there a problem with taking a roll call, Chairman McInley?
Yes.
Could we just take the roll call?
Yes.
I don't have, I don't know the answer to that, to be honest with you.
All right, no problem. We're going to go back to number one for a moment. Regards to taking the ordinance off the table. Instead of just a voice, vote, we will have a roll call. Ms. Lawrence, would you please do a roll call?
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Ms. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
unanimous.
Thank you.
We had a roll call, so it was unanimous, I believe, correct? So we go back to number two. We have a motion and a second, and we're on the question. And I think I asked Manager Pedry if someone, Mr. Raybo raised a question about monies that would have been collected possibly that would have been put into the capital plan? You have that information, or does somebody have that information, Mr. Pedry?
Sure. Mr. McInley, if you would, can you hear me first?
Yes, you can.
Okay, I, if you would recall, council allocated a million dollars into the capital plan in the 2018 budget. 2017, if you recall, was a banner year for Luzern County financially. We were able to close a lot of things, the, the baseball lawsuit with Lackawanna County as well, the Coal Street TIF. And council allocated a million dollars into the 2018 budget, I believe, the capital budget to, from that point. I don't believe there has been another influx of money from county council into the, into the capital budget up until that one, that was accomplishing the budget process. So council, before you is the long-range operational fiscal and capital plan for Luzern County for 2021. It's been in front of you for a couple of months now. I'm going to turn it over to Eddie O'Neill and Larry Plesh to answer any and all questions for you on this. But we did get some good news, which I'm going to ask Eddie and Larry to go over. The, with regard to the money allocated from the five-dollar fee, the registration fee. One of the bridges that we had allocated funding for, council had allocated funding for that, came in under budget. So we, council, I mean, administration is asking council to make a, make an amendment so that we can do another bridge with those funds. That has already been approved by PennDOT, and we just need your approval in order to move forward with it. I'm going to turn it over to Eddie and Larry now to fill you in on what happened there, and any and all questions. Eddie, can you take it from here?
Sure, Mr. Pedry. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can, Mr. O'Neill.
Okay. Good evening, members of council. I'm going to give you a brief synopsis of, I believe, a written explanation that was provided to all council members. There were two bridges, as you probably saw, that included two five-dollar fee that totaled just over two million dollars based on our estimates. And that would be our payment, which is using the five-dollar fee funds to obtain the $30 match from the state.
Mr. O'Neill, you seem to be fading a little bit. If you could speak more into the microphone?
Yes.
Throw a bit clearer. I appreciate it.
Let me try that now. Does that sound any better, Mr. Chair?
That sounds better. If you could continue with that, that'd be better. Thank you.
Again, I'm going to reiterate myself. Two bridge projects that we had committed to and had approval for, using the five-dollar fee funds that were estimated to come in just over two million dollars collectively. And that was to be our contribution to obtain the two million dollar match that was being provided by the federal. And we bid out project, one of the projects.
Excuse me, Mr. McInley?
Yes.
I cannot understand anything basically that has been said. If maybe someone could repeat it.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
I'm going to read the information that was provided, and then you can comment on that. Maybe that can help us to get a better understanding. Does the capital plan, was requested to be changed to add additional bridge replacement naming County Bridge 42505, Pine Creek Road. The bids, the bids for County Bridge 24006, which is the West Liberty Street Bridge, superstructural replacement came in much lower than expected. The proposed cost for the other planned bridge, County Bridge 45809, or the East County Bridge replacement is anticipated to be at or under construction cost estimate as well. Due to the actual cause, the construction costs coming in below the estimated costs, another bridge project can be added to the two-million-dollar threshold. Somebody turn off their microphone, please. The two-million-dollar threshold is a result of the five-dollar fees required to obtain maximum match from the state of two million dollars. Pennsylvania Department of Transportation has approved the addition of County Bridge 42505 to the project list. Essentially what I think you're saying, Mr. O'Neill, correct me if I'm wrong, or Mr. Pedry, or whoever else. In order for us to get the total match from the state, which is two million dollars that they have put aside for us, we must end two million dollars. And in order to make that two-million-dollar threshold, which will allow us to get the match, because the two other bridges came in under the cost estimate, a third bridge is allowed to be added and just reach the two-million-dollar threshold, which allows us to access the full state grant. Am I correct or incorrect on that, Mr. Pedry and Mr. O'Neill?
Yes, Mr. McInley, you are correct.
Okay.
So this was-
Back clear for everyone?
This was, I want to be clear with the counties to what's going on, the council, what's going on here. We had these two bridges that were council already approved and came in under budget. We are now able to take that funding and allocate it to a third bridge. We have to use this money in order to get the full match back from PennDOT. So we're not asking for any more money or anything along those lines. We're going to be utilizing the money that's already been budgeted and fix a third bridge, and then we'll still be our, our match. The five-dollar fee will still go away at the end of 2021 per council's ordinance, and we're just going to be able to fix another bridge. And we're asking for council to, to make an amendment to the capital plan to get that. When I submitted the capital plan, we did not get the bids back at that time for these two other bridges that came in under.
And just for clarification, one of the bridges, the bid, the numbers came in. The second one has not bid out yet, but based on the first one that came in and assuming that the second will follow close there, too. I just want to clarify, both of the bridges that we had approved were not bid and did not come, the bids didn't come in yet. One of them did, and it was under by a significant amount of money, so we're assuming that the second may follow suit.
Okay.
The second bridge, for the information of council, will be bid out probably towards the end of the year.
Okay. Questions?
Mr. McInley, Walter?
Go ahead.
Point of order, I, we may need to ask the solicitor, because this is a new addition to the capital plan, and we already had our public hearing on that. I'm concerned that we are adding something to the capital plan without having either public comment and/or another public hearing. Is that because the charter does not allow to add, I mean, we could obviously amend it, so I just need clarification. Are we okay without having a public hearing or a public comment on that?
I emailed Mr. Griffith, and I referred it to Mr. DeLuca. Go ahead, Mr. DeLuca.
We're directed under the charter to follow the same process that you would follow for the budget. Under the charter, it requires you have one or more public hearings once the county manager submits the original proposed budget. You already had that hearing in this case. It contemplates, I think it's 506 or 507, of the charter contemplates amendments, adjustments to be made to the, to the proposed budget as proposed by the county manager. So in this case, I know you said about public comment, public had the right to comment before this meeting began, so that technically would, that would satisfy the, the public's right to comment. And we did satisfy the, the public hearing requirement under the charter.
But Mike, was this, was that verbiage that Mr. McInley sent to all council on the agenda for the public to see?
What verbiage? As far as, what have you read about the reasoning?
Yes.
Well, that-
I don't know.
That doesn't, that doesn't reach the issue of whether there's the requirement of the public hearing or, which is section 506 and section 507 with approval of the budgets. We satisfied section 506. The amendment will, you know, a member of council will submit the amendment, and the discussion would proceed from there.
Okay.
But generally, during budget season, and I haven't been here for quite a while at the table during budget season, but generally, if a council member makes an amendment to the actual budget itself, the public still has an opportunity to comment on that, right? I mean-
No.
No. No, individuals, council members make, some provide written amendments.
Right.
And some provide oral amendments while we're going through the budget.
But before the ordinance is voted on, in final form. Right. There's an opportunity, just as there was today in the beginning of the meeting, for the public to comment on agenda items. That is, adoption of that revised capital plan is, was to be adopted today. It was on the agenda.
Correct.
That would be the public's opportunity to speak on.
Correct.
Okay.
We're in agreement. I just went a roundabout way to answering.
Yeah, section, section, section 510-
Walter, excuse me, there was somebody else, I think.
Yeah, Linda. Linda, we don't have the ability to comment on any amendments. Just as we amended the minutes of the meeting, and we didn't have to allow public comment prior to voting on that either. The charter and actually the bylaws say that the items can be amended anytime up to adoption. So we, this is the time to make an amendment. The item on the agenda that generated public comment was the actual adoption, not any amendments to it.
Oh, I disagree on that. The public absolutely should have a right to speak on an actual amendment to that budget that, that requires reallocation of the way money is spent. I don't know if, I mean, my impression was that when a budget is adopted, and again, I haven't, I haven't been here at the table while a budget's been adopted in many years. But if you, you could make a substantial change with that approach, and the public would have no ability to comment? That I absolutely, I do not believe that that is, is the law under the circumstances today. The proposal for this amendment or this change in the capital plan, it's part of the agenda. Public had a right to speak on agenda items. If we change it at this moment, the public should have a right to speak on that again. I mean, the public, you know, it's public money. If we're changing the way we're allocating public money and going from Bridge One to Bridge Two, obviously, the public would have a right to have, have a say in that, so.
Yeah, and that was my, that was my question, not to, not to blabber the point, but that was my question. And I think we definitely need to have public comment on any amendments to the capital plan that they've already viewed and commented on.
I was speaking to the issue of a totally entire public hearing. I agree with Attorney DeLuca's assessment.
Okay, so it sounds to me like we've met the requirement for a public hearing. But on this particular, which we haven't even made a motion yet or anything, but on the particular item of adding an extra bridge because of the two-million-dollar match and the five-dollar fee situation, and we should have public comment on that once we have a motion on the floor, correct?
Actually, was, was the plan itself part of the agenda?
Yes.
Yeah, the public had the actual-
The actual narrative regarding the change was not. But the plan itself has been out there for several months.
Okay, so but the amended plan, what was the amended plan part of the budget?
The amended plan was posted to the website yesterday along with the narrative. This is Sharon.
Yes, okay. And the amended plan was part of the agenda. Is that right?
That's right.
It was on the agenda.
Part of the agenda with the narrative.
Right.
Want to make, want to make a quick point of order, though. You can't amend something unless it's, has a motion and a second. You can put an amended plan out there publicly for them to read it, but we haven't publicly, we haven't actually made a motion in a second to amend anything. So the plan that currently is, is, is being proposed is the current plan from two weeks ago. currently is, is, is being proposed is the current plan from two weeks ago. So all we did was bring the one off the table, and nothing has been changed at this point.
Right, because we haven't had a motion. You're correct about that, and we haven't voted on anything.
Well, that was, uh, that was my, in the event that the county manager had submitted, uh, a request to, to you to make as part of the, uh, agenda for this evening, the amended, uh, request or amended plan, and the public had an opportunity to speak on that plan, then there would be no need for additional public comment. But if the plan that you are taking off the table and considering here now, uh, is the plan, uh, that needs to still be amended, then the public has a right to speak on the amendment.
Okay.
Can I be heard on this, Mr. McGinley?
Absolutely, go ahead.
Let, how about we just, we just do this? Well, if, if council is so inclined to, to ha- to grant that amendment to allow us to do that third bridge, then that would become part of the plan that was submitted. At that point, we reopen it for public comment for anybody on this. If anybody would like to comment on the, on the capital plan, on the capital plan only prior to the, prior to the vote, that way it's, it's in the plan, everybody gets a chance to talk about it, council will vote. I mean, like, at this point, we could already be done with that.
We don't even have a motion yet on the revision, on the proposed revision, so that's what we're waiting on.
Okay.
All right. Do we have a motion on the proposed revision?
Presented, Snee.
Mr. Snee. Do we have a second for Mr. Snee?
Sheila, yes.
Mr. Saven.
On the question.
Now, we have a motion and a second. Uh, public comment in regards to the proposed revision to the plan.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mr. Mr. Raybo here.
Okay, I think Mr. Manta was first, though.
Okay. I, I, I don't think we want public comment at this point, Mr. McGinley, right?
Yes, we are. We have a motion and a second. Before we get to, um, questions for the council and before we vote on it, we have to have public comment. That's what we're doing.
Hey, let Mr. Raybo go over.
Mr. Raybo, go ahead, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Manta. Um, I wanted to, first of all, thank, uh, Solicitor for the right opinion. Uh, yes, this is a substantial change in a capital fund, in a capital funding project, so yes, this would require public comment, and since it's the executive branch making the, uh, amended change and not the, not a member of council, it would require, uh, public comment on, on a capital, uh, plan. That, so thank you for that. Uh, secondly, uh, on the, next, on the funding for another bridge, I would like to ask for the county manager and for the budget finance and for the road and bridge, um, uh, heads to figure out if there is sufficient funding, because, uh, I do believe that even if you do get the two million dollar match from that third bridge, uh, how do you know there's, there's not going to be a shortfall because of the fact that there was no additional funds for, uh, the match if, uh, the bridge funding is to, uh, need, need it? For example, if you have the five dollar registration fee and you have the, I don't know if it, what was collected by, uh, Mr. Mr. Swetz can elaborate on that, uh, uh, after the vote or sometime, uh, in his budget report, but, uh, what was collected, if you don't have sufficient amount for that third bridge and the state doesn't give you any money, because that money, the two million dollar match was from leftover funds from federal DOT. So I don't know if the state will grant an additional, additional fund because they already allocated seven hundred million dollars to the state police from the gas tax money. So I, I just, I'm just concerned that the county will be, if they take on another bridge, that there won't be a shortfall in the funding, and that's why I, in my original public comment, I asked the question if there was any money, additional monies collected for the capital plan, because if there was any, uh, problems with, uh, shortfall, uh, if they took on any additional projects. So if, uh, the county manager, Mr. Swetz, Mr. O'Neil can elaborate on that, I appreciate it. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mr. Manta?
Okay, I'm, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Everybody can hear you, Mr. Manta.
Okay, thank you. Again, that was a good, a good catch by, uh, Walter, uh, because of the fact that everybody has to pay attention to that budget, and it, like Mr. Raybo said, if there's a shortfall of the budget, where are we going to get the money to con- to complete the project? If they have a good legitimate place that they could get fund from, to re, it, so, so what if there are another million dollars over, over budget this time? You know, they said it could be less, it could be more, so well, let's, let's, let's look at that half a glass and say, hold it. Do we want to use up that half a glass, or should we save the half a glass for funding for another smaller project, a smaller bridge? And what is the name of that bridge? Uh, I, I don't, I don't know the, the name, like 45201, where is it located? And, and, you know, that's something that I don't know, but if someone could tell me that, I'd appreciate it, and thank you very much.
Pine Creek Road Bridge, that's the name.
Is that, is that in Jack, Jackson Township? Is it in Kingston Township?
Not familiar.
That's a new country. I think it's in Eddie, where is it, Meska Park?
Meska Park Township.
Meska Park Township. All right, anyone else in the public?
Chairman McGinley?
Yes.
Ron Knapp?
Okay, Mr. Manta.
All council members who are, uh, allowing this public comment, thank for the bridge allocations. Um, I, I think it's important that, um, uh, Manager Pedri can... Just in, uh, in regard to the surplus that had been shown in 2018, this would not have been possible if it weren't for a robust economy, low unemployment rate would enable people, the ability to purchase more vehicles to be registered with the five dollar fee. We must recognize the administration who created the jobs. In other words, kudos to the Trump administration. I mean, I, it seems to me that it's often forgotten, uh, the, the reasoning behind the robust economy, and there's not enough credit dealt to, uh, the people that deserve the credit. We can't sit there with our chest out, uh, claiming the victory for a robust economy when it was, we should, uh, job dreams out of Washington. I, I kind of, uh, summed that up, and again, thank you for allowing me to speak during this.
Anybody else in the public, please? If not...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I apologize. I just want to interject briefly. I, I was mistaken on the location of the Pine Creek Road Bridge. That is in New Columbus Borough. I just want to correct myself.
New Columbus Borough. Thank you. All right, members of council on the question?
Uh, Mr. Urban.
Question for Mr. Snee, second for Mr. Saven.
Steve here.
I have a question.
Mr. Urban, I think, first?
Yeah, so, um, on this amendment, we don't have an actual, um, number, right? There's no physical number to put into the spreadsheet to plug it in, so how can we vote on something that's not, doesn't, doesn't have a budget number to it?
We have a budget estimate.
There is an estimated cost for that, I believe, Mr. Urban.
I, I didn't see it anywhere.
What's the, what's the estimated cost, Mr. O'Neil?
It's five hundred thousand dollars.
Five hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, because it's not in the spreadsheet or, or in that description before.
It's in the, it's in the, in the copy of the amended plan.
Uh, Ms. Saven, did you have a question?
Yes, yes. Um, is there any reason we don't know how much, uh, we were, we were off on the estimate? How much was that? How much did it come in? Did we get a surplus from?
Well, on, on the bridge project that the bid did come in on, on the construction phase, it wasn't, uh, there's a couple different aspects of, of, uh, elements that, that, that make up the total cost of the bridge, but on the construction, which typically makes up seventy-five to eighty percent of the cost, uh, that came in, we estimated it eight hundred thousand dollars, and that came in at, uh, five hundred and eleven thousand dollars.
So...
So it was, it was a savings of two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars.
But again, um, that won't be enough to do the third bridge, two hundred and some thousand.
Well, what, what we're thinking is that both of the bridges that we had slated for our share or for our portion of the two million were about the same cost. We had them estimated at eight hundred thousand. If the first one came in at two hundred and eighty-nine thousand under our estimated cost, we're kind of putting two and two together and making an estimate that the other one will probably come in about two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars under budget as well.
So if that's, if that's the case, Ed, then we have about a half a million. Is that enough to do the third bridge?
That's what the third bridge estimate is. That's correct.
Okay.
Anyone else in council?
Um, what, what, Mr. McGinley, it's Walter, just to clarify, if in fact we, we approve the amendment and we, we are short, is there, what, what's the ramifications for that, Mr. O'Neil?
Uh, Mr. Griffith, if, if that were to be the case, if that were the case, what we would have to do, as we did in this case, is we would contact, uh, Pendott. We would look at another smaller project to try to bring us up over that threshold, and we would have to get preapproval for that. We've already gotten preapproval from Pendott on the New Columbus Borough project in preparation for bringing this to council.
Okay, and you feel, and you, and you...
If, if, if the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead. Go ahead, Dave, I'm sorry.
If the New Columbus Borough Bridge comes in, we, we believe it'd be five hundred thousand dollars. If it comes in over that, over that amount, and we, we can't do it for the money we have, I would come back to county council and say, hey, listen, I want to do this bridge five hundred thousand, it came in for seven hundred thousand, we can't do it, but I can do this bridge for this amount of money, and it's already been approved by Pendott, that's down the road.
Okay.
So you would have, you would have the ability to, to approve the next one, if, if that's the case.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Chair. Go ahead. Chris, uh, Mr. O'Neil, uh, question. How much of the two million match do we spend at, up to this point? Is it one, one point five million? Is that what we're at? Light me, please.
We haven't, we, we haven't spent any of the match as of yet. That project is in the design phase, so that money has been set aside for us for that project. We have been given approval for that funding. It's, it's there for us. Um, I, I, I don't want to say we haven't spent anything, but to my knowledge, that would be the Hillside Road Bridge, and I know that's probably still in preliminary design. Mr. Flesch, can you add anything to that statement?
Um, that is currently being reviewed by Pendott as far as the type of bridge, uh, the procedure we're taking and the detour and all that stuff. We have had a series of meetings with Pendott with our consultant, but we, the consultant has not billed us anything to date because Pendott also has to approve their, uh, costs. So they're also approving not only the bridge, but also approving the consultant's fee for the project, but to get, all get paid out of that two million dollar match. So to this, to date, we have not requested a dime from Pendott from the match, but needless to say, the ball has been rolling for this for quite a while now, and just Pendott just takes the time on certain things and, as we all are busy with, uh, and they'll, we have a meeting actually scheduled for tomorrow to discuss some details. Once Pendott approves the technical fee, then the design can begin, and then they'll allow us to submit invoices.
Any other questions? I think, I think we understand, Mr. O'Neil. Any other questions? On the revision, the proposed revision, Mr. Snee made the motion, Mr. Saven made the second. Roll call, please.
Now, this is just on the amendment right now, right? On the revision?
It's not even an amendment because we don't have a document yet.
Okay, so...
A revision.
Okay, so we could still make comment on amendments from other things, right?
Correct.
Okay, all right, no problem.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Huggs?
Yes.
Ms. Huggs?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Rado?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes. Okay, the revision is added to the proposed plan. Going back to the number two, the plan itself, Ms. Hock, you made the motion, Ms. McDermott, you made the second. Uh, you're all right with, uh, adding your, the revision that was just approved to your motion and second?
Yes. After, yes.
Yes. Okay, we still have, uh, on the motion itself, Mr. Griffith, do you have?
Yeah. Yes, I wa- I want to make a motion to amend the capital plan to remove the hundred thousand dollar.
Okay, just so we're clear, we don't have anything yet, so it's not really an amendment. It's a revision possibly. I know I, I make that mistake, I use the word and it's not correct. Go ahead.
Okay, so I want to make a motion to revise the capital plan to remove the hundred thousand dollars and the fifty thousand dollars from the airport until we get, or set someone from the airport to report.
The Forty-Ford Airport or Wamaming Valley?
Wamaming Valley Airport, yes.
Okay. Do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second, Urban?
Okay, we have a, Mr. Griffith made the motion, and Mr. Urban, you made the second on the question. Very nothing, roll call, please.
Mr. Chair, sorry, I was, I was muted. Uh, just a question, so, so we're holding this up until they come back with the master plan from the state, is that correct?
That's correct.
Is that what you're referring to?
Right, the master plan, which is in progress, uh, has been approved to a certain level, but there's still more to be approved.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Harry Huggs?
Go ahead.
I think I made the case a few meetings ago, or, or the last meeting, why it's very appropriate use, and it's not going to be encumbered, it's not going to save any money because it's just allocated for these two purposes.
Again, that airport's a gem. I think it, it would be a good long-term investment for assistance in Loser County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and Mr. McGinley, if I could add to Harry's comment, I would really appreciate the fact that we need to have Mr. Scrabolda or some member from the advisory board come to council and explain what's going on at the airport.
Very interesting that you say that, Mr. Griffith, because I just said over there yesterday, I've made a phone call this morning, and I finally got a phone call back after four o'clock today, prior to our audit meeting. Mr. Scrabola, one of the brothers called and said that, and I told him that what, uh, we wanted to get that group together and get started and get active, and he said he would do that, and he would get back to me tomorrow. Uh, he also had a member of the, that group, uh, call him today and voice that same information, and I spoke with also a member of that, uh, advisor group, uh, Mr. Berish today, and he is of that same opinion, so I think we will be getting some activity on that regard. Okay? That's a sort of a little bit of an update with that situation, but hopefully it seems to have a little more, uh, enthusiasm and, uh, incitement to it, so hopefully we'll get some positive, uh, results.
And, and quite, and just to add to that is I don't understand why we have to wait for Mr. Scrabold to put a liaison on that advisory board.
No, we're not asking, Mrs., we're just asking to get that, get that group together, at least they haven't even met. A lot of those people haven't even had a meeting yet, have been appointed, so it's a starting point, uh, Mr. Griffith.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay, roll call on the revision that Mr. Griffith brought forward. A hundred thousand dollars and fifty thousand dollars are assigned to the Wamaming Valley Airport. A hundred thousand dollars and fifty thousand dollars are assigned to the Wyoming Valley Airport for two projects. One, I think, is a masonry project, and the other, I believe, is for a gasoline tank. Uh, roll call, please.
Ms. Huggs?
Yes.
No, yes or no?
Uh, yes.
Did you say yes? Oh, yes. Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinn, or excuse, Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Radel?
No.
Ms. Sedman? Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Huggs?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Five yes, six no.
Revision does not pass? Okay, back to the motion with the initial revision that was discussed earlier about adding the third bridge. Ms. Hauk made the motion, Ms. McDermott made the second. On the question? Roll call, please.
This is on the capital plan?
Correct, number two.
Okay, Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Huggs?
Yes.
Ms. Huggs?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Thank you. Moving down to number three, motion to introduce the ordinance entering into the intergovernmental agreement with Hanover Township for the repair and dedication of the Division Street Bridge in accordance with the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Law, Act One Seventy-Seven, Nineteen Ninety-Eight, previously adopted as Act One Eighty of Nineteen Seventy-Two. Do we have a motion to introduce the ordinance?
Present it, Snee.
Mr. Snee, do we have a second for Mr. Snee?
Second, Kendra.
Very good, Ms. Radel, on the question?
Uh, Mr. McGinley, on the question real quick, do we ever get an answer to Mr. Councilman Urban's question about the removal of the old bridge?
Mr. Griffith, we, uh, if you're talking about the articles that, uh, reference, uh, uh, an agreement, we do not have, we could not locate an assigned agreement. Uh, our, uh, charge was to, uh, transfer the fifty percent of the ownership, uh, of the county, uh, once the, the bridge was, uh, the work was completed, and that's what we did. We have no actual signed agreement. Um, and there, and we can't make a basis on a claim on, on an agreement that's unsigned.
No, I was referring to the demolition that we, when they removed the old bridge, they, they were supposed to pay half the cost, I believe, is what, I think his question was. Mr. Urban can clarify for me.
Well, there's no agreement, so I don't.
There's no agreement, there's no signed agreement, uh, stating that, we don't have a signed agreement.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then we did, we did do a search.
And I think that, uh, information was sent out to, to, last week then. Okay, anyone else? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Sorry, yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Huggs? Mr. Huggs?
Yes.
Ms. Huggs?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Thank you. And as, um, many people remember, one of our goals has been to turn over the roads and bridges that the county was responsible for to the municipalities, so this is our first step in turning over that bridge to Hanover Township in this particular case. But that's, uh, responsibility will then shift to the Hanover Township to maintain and repair as necessary. Moving down to number four, motion to adopt the resolution entering into a lease agreement for a portion of land at the Luzerne County Annex for use by the Flower Tent. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Linda.
Ms. Huggs, do we have a second for Ms. Huggs?
Second, Urban?
Mr. Urban? On the question?
Yes, Sheila.
Yes.
Now, this is really little, but I just want to know why. The spring price, the dollars a day, was forty-five, and the fall is forty-four sixty-four. So I just wondered why we aren't going up a little?
Uh, Mr. O'Neill, and I know Mr. Ancilio, I know you're on the line, you may, your microphone might be used.
Can I be heard?
I, I'm here.
Mr. O'Neill first, and then Mr. Ancilio. Go ahead, Mr. O'Neill.
Yes, uh, Ms. Sedman, that's simply because we tried to come up with a, a, a kind of a round figure based on the days. Um, so we tried to hit that forty-five dollar mark, uh, but as you can see, the total fee based on the days for the proposed lease is twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, if we would have made it an even forty-five dollars, it would have been twenty-five and some change. Um, I didn't think we needed to get that specific. This is the same exact fee and the same number of days
I see.
As the lease that we had last fall.
I see.
We, we tried ver, we tried very hard to back into that daily rate, so it was somewhat consistent.
Mr. Ancilio, you want to speak to that?
Uh, Eddie is correct, uh, with that, you know, when I looked at the rates, I did try to, I pulled last year's lease and agreement that we had with the council and used the exact same one. I actually pretty much kept the dates the same as well, and just changed the, just changed year
on the lease, so it's the exact same as last year.
And as far as fall goes, uh, I mean, I'm sorry, as far as the spring goes, you actually received more this year because we were not able to open through, by Pennsylvania for Easter or for the majority of Mother's Day. So there's about three weeks extra that you guys got this year that we weren't there for.
Well, we thank you for making your payment.
And also, what I did was I donated a tent over to, um, for, for them to sell the flags for the veterans at their location there also this year. I did donate that tent to them as well.
Very nice of you, thank you. Anybody else with a question? Hey, hearing none, roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence?
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Huggs?
Yes.
Ms. Huggs?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. McDermott. Moving down to number five, motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the county manager to execute a lease agreement between Luzerne County and Hanover Township for the active adult center, Drums, Pennsylvania, by the Luzerne County, Wyoming Agency on Aging. Do we have a motion?
Present it, Snee.
Mr. Snee, do we have a second for Mr. Snee?
Second, Chris.
Mr. Perry? On the question? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Huggs?
Yes.
Huggs?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes, thank you. Moving down to number six, motion to introduce an ordinance amending the two thousand twenty fiscal year budget for Luzerne County Human Services. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second, Urban?
Mr. Urban? On the question? Again, this is being ordinance, amending the two thousand twenty budget. So we need four, uh, votes affirmative in order to induce the motion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Snee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Huggs?
No.
Ms. Huggs?
Uh, yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
McGinley?
Yes.
Six yes, five no.
Okay, uh, the ordinance is introduced, we'll have a, a public hearing and a second reading. Moving down to number seven, introduce the motion, introduce the ordinance, amending the two thousand twenty fiscal year budget for Luzerne County, the, uh, area and agency. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Linda.
Ms. Hauk, do we have a second?
Second, Walter.
Mr. Griffith? On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Huggs?
Yes.
Ms. Huggs?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Snee?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Yes, three no.
Thank you, motion first reading, so it'll be a public hearing, and there will be a second, uh, motion to approve the ordinance that's submitted. Number eight, motion to introduce the ordinance, amending the two thousand twenty fiscal year budget for Luzerne County for the District Attorney's Office. And you have a information from the District Attorney in that regard. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Linda.
Ms. Hauk, do we have a second?
Second, Kendra.
Ms. Radel? On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Huggs?
Yes.
Ms. Huggs?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Thank you. Moving down to number nine, the motion to adopt the resolution transferring the federal Hava rent funds from account one hundred dot thirty dot forty-one twenty dot four forty-five dot ten, other income, to account number one hundred dot ninety-five dot forty-seven twenty-one, uh, five seventy dot eighty-one dot two zero one nine, general obligation bond principal. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Walter. Second, Urban?
Second.
Mr. Urban, second now. On the question? Mr. Urban, I think you've, uh, submitted this, you would like to speak?
Actually, it was Mr. Griffin. Yes, yes, it was, it was me, Mr.
I'm sorry, you're right, correct, I'm sorry.
Yeah, um, yeah, the only, the only concern that I have, uh, is the email that we received from Mr. Swets, and I, I'm sure he's on the, on the line, maybe he could explain.
He is on the line.
Okay, so maybe he could explain the, and, and I know back when they, we took the bond out, I was a member of the public at the time, and I specifically remember the discussion that council had when we took the thirty-four million dollar bond and said any monies that we received for reimbursement would go towards paying down the principal of the bond. And that, that was specifically asked, and we were told there was no penalty for doing that. So this money was specifically given to us regarding the, uh, purchase of the voting machines, and that was what the bond was for, so I don't understand the email, so maybe he could explain.
Okay, anybody here, any other council people with questions, and then we'll get Mr. Swets.
I couldn't, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Ross.
Yeah, I couldn't agree with this proposal a, anymore, this is, this is a fantastic idea. Should have been done a long time ago, and this is one of those accounts, we have money sitting in, in the bank that is not being put into any use. This is going to save taxpayer money by paying down the principal, and it's a very appropriate use for this fund that's probably about fourteen, fifteen years old at this point. Uh, support this a hundred percent, obviously, bearing on what Mr. Swets has to say.
Okay. Anyone else in council? Mr. Swets? You'd like to?
I'm here, Mr. McGinley.
Uh, email and questions that have been raised?
Sure. Mr. McGinley, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Sure, no problem. Uh, Mr. Griffith is correct, but the first thing is, when we borrowed the thirty-three million, uh, about three million of that was for the voting machines, and we're going to get reimbursed two point six million. There's this three hundred thousand from the federal, and then there's a piece from the state. Uh, we put this all in one fund underneath elections, so we can see the revenue and expense. My understanding was that if we received additional money, it would go into the debt service. I have no problem paying the debt service, my issue is more moving the general ledger line. Um, the, my understanding was that we paid the voting machines first, and then any additional money we had went to the debt service. So we're not looking to use this for anything but the voting machines or debt service. I don't think we need the transfer, I just think Mr. Griffith and I agree with probably ninety percent. Uh, just that last little whereas we differ on. Question, Mr. Chair.
I have a, one quick question for Mr. Swets, and then Mr. Ross, you certainly can, uh, come in, please. Changing it from one account number to another account number, does that create any issues for us, Mr. Swets?
It, it does, it does and it doesn't, I mean, my, my, my preference is to leave it separate. It doesn't change the cash balance, so we have the money, and we're going to use it for either to pay down the machines or to pay the debt. My thinking is to leave the debt separate, and to leave this with the other items for the voting machines, which is in one hundred in the elections, uh, department, which is forty-one twenty. So it's not something we will have a finding if we move it, it's just, I feel it's more proper to have the money coming in and the actual voting machines in the same department.
Okay, have we paid the total amount for the voting machines, or is this money going to be used to pay that?
We paid the first check of one point one million a few months ago, I think it was the end of December, actually, because we had to do that when we put the P.O. out. We paid the second check, which will be getting reimbursed for the one point six million, probably about two weeks ago. So we've paid about two point seven million, the difference is the maintenance on the voting machines. Uh, council got something from the state that showed the difference is, we'll get reimbursed for the machines, but not for the maintenance. So we've, we've, we've already. So we've, we've already done the two checks out of the general fund for our piece.
Okay, so we've already paid the, for the machines, we have not paid from the maintenance part of the contract.
Correct.
Okay, Mr. Haas, you had a question?
Thanks, Mr. Chair, question for Mr. Swets, a comment, and then another question. Uh, the first one is, it seems like that we have, we have not received the full reimbursement yet from the state and the federal government, so does, does encumbering this amount of money into, um, the voting machines account, will that shrink down the reimbursement percentage we're gonna get? Does it have any bearing on that at this point? If we move this, this fund?
No, we're gonna get the 1.6 million from the state, we've already paid that check, and council and, and administration got that email from the state, uh, it should be coming any day now, so we're gonna get the 1.6 million regardless of what GL it is, is in, it's more of just keeping the voting items in the same spot for auditing purposes, as I said in the email, it was more that we handle the GLs for the day-to-day, I have no issue on things being moved to the reserve, being moved to, uh, the capital plan, it's just, that's where we believe it should be, and again, we get audited, so that's kind of the recourse, if the auditors tell us to move it, we'll move it, we just think that's the more correct GL.
You have a second, Mr. Haas?
Well, yeah, well, that makes sense, we also want the fidelity to the audit, to the auditors. Um, secondly, then, we, we just know that our debt service is going up this next year, so, um, in order to stall out a tax increase, could we hold that money and pay down, um, that entire amount towards the debt service, which is gonna be generated by that bond we took out? And, um, that's, that's my comment, and then a question, does that make sense?
Mr. Swets, did you hear that?
Yes, I got that, uh, the comment is fine, I think the question is, we really don't have extra money for this, so we're getting reimbursed the full amount, we got the first reimbursement, we're getting another 1.6 million, so it's, it's not gonna do anything really with, I agree, the debt service is gonna go up, and that'll have to be addressed during the budget process, uh, obviously, you know, everyone's been through the process, so it, it really has nothing to do with the budget, the checks are already out the door for, to the vendor, the two separate checks, the one in December, to actually, so we can get the 60% match from the state, and the second one for the actual machines when they arrive, uh, we're just waiting on reimbursement. It's just more of what GL account, it's not extra money, it's not found money, it's already been used for the purchase of the machines. I would agree that if we got extra money, uh, that, and that when the, we had the ordinance for the borrowing, any extra found money, uh, related to voting machines would go towards the debt service, but this was actually for the voting machines themselves.
Okay, all right, yeah, that, that makes a lot of sense, and okay, but again, all things together, then, you don't find anything wrong with what Mr. Griffin's suggesting, it's just if the auditors say differently, then we, we have to do accord, according to what they say.
Okay, anyone else?
Right, did, did you hear me there, Mr., did Mr. Swets?
Yeah, Mr. Haas, I heard you, I think, I think that's correct, it, it's, it's not, it's not with who asked for it, or the actual presentation, I think that's fine, it's more that I think the revenue and, and the expense for the voting machine should be in the same place. If the auditors think we should move it, we'll clearly move it.
All right, very good, thank you for all that.
Okay. Anyone else?
This is Leon.
Yes.
So, the money, you know, like, uh, Mr. Haas had mentioned about paying down the debt service, regardless of where that money is, we're not paying anything towards the principal of the debt service right now, right, so it doesn't matter what account it's in, I, I guess I'm asking?
Mr. Swets, did you hear that?
Yes, I heard that, the reason we put it in that account is because we have the expense, so, and we'll go through the budget reports later, and I don't expect everyone to flip right to them, uh, the 599.46, the millions of dollars that we spent in the voting machines, is in that same department, so we're just trying to show the revenue that comes in, and the expense in the same department.
I answered your question, Ms. McDermott?
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else?
Uh, just, Mr. Swets, Sheila, isn't that like an accounting principle, that revenue and expense would be in the same number? Like you said?
I, I, we would keep it in the same place, again, I, I think it's just more of how you present the general ledger, if we're told to move it, we'll move it, but, you know, we didn't do it for, for any reason other than to put the revenue and expense of the same project in the same spot, so, that's why we still feel it belongs in that line.
Anyone else?
So, Mr. Swets, how would we pay down on the principal of a bond if we couldn't use that money for that, that way?
So, first of all, we had to pay for the machines, I, I think that was the one whereas we disagreed on, so, we obviously had the machines that were ordered, so of this 3 million that was for the voting machines, of that whole 33 million, uh, we had to pay for the voting machines, so, we had to pay the vendor for the voting machines first, I think the part was that, you know, if we got any additional funding, if any money was moved, if any money was found that was moved to this project, uh, we could certainly pay that, and I think at that point, we'd say, yes, uh, we can move it to the reserve fund, or we can move, I don't think we should move it to the debt service fund, even if we're paying debt service, because it's not a recurring payment, uh, I just kept it in other income with the elections to be consistent, and again, if an outside auditor has us move it, we'll move it.
So, if, if we put that $343,000 in the reserve, could we pay the debt service down from there?
We could use reserve for basically anything, um, I, I would suggest leaving it where it is, but again, you know, we're, that, that's why I sent the memo, that's, that's our thoughts on it.
So, so just to be clear, if I, if I decide, if, if there's a, a resolution to put the money in the reserve, and then make a resolution to take it out of the reserve and pay the debt service, that's okay? To be clear.
I think council has more of a right to, to move things to the reserve than to tell individual GLs, but again, as with any vote, we'll, we'll deal with the consequences, uh, I don't think this particular one needs to be moved, I have no issues with any of the other things being moved to the reserve, and anytime I was asked, I said, hey, if there's found money, I have no problem moving it to the reserve fund.
Well, I mean, this really isn't found money, it is, it is money that's given to us from reimbursement.
Correct.
Just so I'm, just so, just so, I'm sorry, just so I'm, just so I'm clear, you're gonna pay the debt service, right, so the money's coming in, this is just so the money come in, and then we're gonna pay the debt service, correct, that's, I wanna be clear with everybody on this, like, whatever the debt service is, we have to pay that, that fee.
We have to pay for the machines, then we have to pay for the debts, and regardless, we have to pay for both.
Correct.
If reimbursement is for the machines first, if there's extra reimbursement, or we got less machines, or there was some, a kind of change in the, in the contract, and we had extra money, yes, we can use that towards the debt service. Right now it's-
But do we have extra, do, we, do we have extra money at this point, do we have less money, do we have anything of that other than we specifically budget?
Nope, just that we specifically budget, the 300 and some thousand from the feds, and we will be getting almost 1.7 million from the state, so exactly what we budgeted.
Okay, so, so, just so I'm clear, so your position is, leave everything in there, council's already allocated this money in the budget, it's all good, we have already done everything, nothing's changed at this point, we're gonna pay down the debt service because it's already in the budget to do all this process, there's no need to change all these accounts around at this point, and then that, that's your position at this point, is that right?
That's correct.
So the 300- So I'm clear, thank you. Right, so just, just to, put a point on it, the 343,000, it was given back to the county to reimburse us for the purchase of those voting machines, that is not, that is not gonna be used for that purpose then, correct? Because that wasn't budgeted, obviously, that money was not-
We knew, we knew that was the federal reimbursement.
It was budgeted, it was budgeted?
Yeah.
343,000, and the 1.6, and the money for the 3.4 million was not budgeted, we're gonna get 2 million from the state and the feds, and we borrowed 1.4 million, this is part of the money of the 2 million from the state and the feds, so that's going towards the machines, that's why I'm saying not to move it.
Yeah, we were aware of that, Mr. Griffin, that, that was a fact, the federal government had already did that before the state, uh, finally came along and said that they would also reimburse. Okay? Anyone else with a question? All right, we have a motion to adopt the resolution transferring the federal HAVA grant funds from one account, and I'll just read the last couple numbers, 445 dot 10, which is under, under, on income, to a second account, which is, uh, 81 dot 2019, general obligation bond principal. Oh, yes, we move the funds, you vote no, the funds stay in the account that are signed already. Roll call.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Haug?
Yes.
Ms. Hauk?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Rado?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Voe?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Uh, four yes, seven no.
Okay. Moving down to number 10. Motion to introduce an ordinance to amend the 2020 position budget, legislatively authorizing the elimination and creation of positions in Division 30, part of 4120, which is elections. Do we have a motion?
So moved Walter.
Mr. Griffin, do we have a second for Mr. Griffin?
Second Urban.
Mr. Urban. On the question. Mr. Griffin, I think you submitted this?
Yep. Yep, this is the, the same ordinance as I've been presenting, that the, uh, the administrative code clearly says it's a legislatively authorized position, and council needs to approve or disapprove of the position creation. One of the, one of the concerns I have is the, and, and I sent this email out as well, is that even though the emails that are coming to us are saying we're saving money, if a union person moves into those positions, we're not saving any money, we're actually paying money, because they get a, they get an increase of the difference between the one position to the other, so if anybody moves in those positions, and clearly, I think there's people in that office that are gonna move into those positions, because we're eliminating their position, we're eliminating the inspector position, so anybody who's sitting in that position's gonna have to move either to the administrative assistant position, or move somewhere else, or retire, one or the other, because they're not gonna have a job after the position's been abolished, so, to me, I don't think we're getting the, the right information regarding how this, uh, position changes are working, that's why it's important that council understand what the cost is gonna be, and, and I don't have a problem authorizing positions, I have a problem with not knowing the cost, because we're gonna have to be responsible for the budgetary, um, cost of this move, so if it's gonna cost us an additional 6 to 9,000 for people to move, then, you know, then council needs to be aware of that, so when we have to do the budget, and there's an increase in our budget by that much money, where's that money gonna come from? We're under the impression, I believe, that the, the, the position creating is going to save us money, when in fact, the only way it will save us money is if we hire from outside into a, a brand-new person in that position, and that's obviously can't, isn't gonna happen, so, I mean, it can, if nobody takes the position and we have to hire outside, so, my concern is that the, the administrative code clearly says that's a function of council, that is not a violation of the charter, and, and I, you know, I think we need to follow what the law says, we've, we've made that rule, and the manager needs to follow it.
Question?
Mr. McGinley, can I speak heard on, can I speak heard on one thing?
Wait, wait for other council people, then, Mr. Pedry can certainly, all right. Ms. Safe, you have a question?
I just wanna know, isn't this the same issue that the lawyer has given us an opinion on several times already?
Yes.
And you are suggesting that your opinion is, I mean, it's different than Mr. DeLucas, and you are saying you're correct and the lawyer's wrong?
Well, quite honestly, Sheila, I went back, uh, and I looked at the minutes from 2014 when that was adopted, because I was in the, I was in the room when that happened, and it's right in, it's right in the minutes, that Mr. Pedry said it is not a violation of the charter, and he researched it from Mr. Lawton, and Mr. Um, um, Williams asked the question specifically, is, will it mis-micromanage and interfere with the daily operations of the county, and Mr. Pedry said absolutely not, it's provided legal opinion that the ordinance is charter compliant, so now, in 2014, it was charter compliant, but now it's not charter compliant.
If, if I may, uh, Mr. McGinley, uh, I'm, I'm very happy, uh, that Councilman Griffith looked at the minutes of that meeting, um, we actually looked, uh, listened to the audio of two meetings, uh, one December 30th, uh, 2013, and the other one January 21st, 2014, and, uh, we transcribed those minutes as best we could, and, uh, Mr. Griffin is correct, uh, to the extent that, uh, then Chief County Solicitor Pedry did, uh, say that the amendment, um, was appropriate, uh, but it's the intent, and what was discussed at those meetings as to, uh, those amendments, and, uh, I have, uh, the transcription, I can send that to council, but I'll just, uh, read certain sections, uh, for the issue of brevity, um, uh, Councilwoman Hauk, uh, was, uh, as she is with the administrative code right now, very involved, uh, in this, and on December 30th, 2013, she said that, uh, these, uh, would be legislatively authorized positions. I didn't coin that term, I did some research on other governmental budgets and structures, and that is a term that is used in other government budgets, so, all of this amendment requires is that council will be notified in writing at any change in the number of positions, in the change in classification in any of those positions, or change in compensation for any of those legislatively authorized positions, no fewer than five days before the changes are being implemented, I assume that it would be known at least five days before any of those changes would be made. She went on to say, only if, um, to the, uh, uh, a statement made by Councilman, uh, Braminsky, uh, is it possible to include, uh, in there something that would identify the positions, um, and, uh, she responded, only if they're budgeted, your position budget, your budget is passed, your position budget tells you how much you need to pay for the positions if they are filled, and if any of those positions is vacant, it would still be held vacant, it wouldn't be eliminated, but the point is, if there was going to be an elimination of any position or change in any position during that year, that would get prior notification of that change occurring. Mr. Lawton, uh, during that December meeting, uh, stated, as you know, the manager already provides notification of all personnel transactions, mostly on our website, this simply adjusts the timing of that notification, and I just wanna make, take a moment to once again associate myself with Mr. Braminsky, use of position identifications is helpful and necessary way of tracking the existence of positions and knowing the history of employees who held those positions. Going to January 21st, Mr. Lawton again reiterated that he wants to be clear that we do currently provide notice of personnel transactions to the public and to council, and we do provide notice of budget transfers that take place either because someone has vacated a position, and removing the money someplace else, or if a position is being created as part of some larger thing, we do provide that, we do provide that information, as Mr. Bogav said, this change just changes the order, but I just want everyone to be clear, that is, that it is not something that takes place now without two public, uh, things, thank you. Ms., uh, Councilwoman Hauk at that meeting also said, this is nothing to do with who fills the position, it's simply asking for changes if a position is created or deleted, or if the salary is changed, in general, in any way if it affects the budget, it does not affect how the manager fills those positions, and Ms. Stobash, uh, followed with, well, it still will eliminate surprise, and since reclassification of positions might include salary difference, I appreciate knowing. I, I will send the, the transcript of that audio, but it's clear from what was discussed was that it was just a shift in notification of when the county manager changed a, a position, so, uh, the position that the Chief County Solicitor at that time took is consistent with the position that we are taking right now.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. DeLucas, go ahead.
Yeah, first of all, I-